Thank you everyone. I'd like to call the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board meeting for October 15, 2013. First item on the agenda is Lisa McMillan, Lena Brown, 86 East Market Street, site plan approval, and public hearing. So I'd like to motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor? Why don't you come up and you could make a presentation for the public?
I'm John Martin, I'm here with Lisa McMillan, I represent her. Just a little housekeeping, just so you know what's going on. This site plan application, as you know, came as a stop work order after the project was substantially underway. And we have appealed that stop work order. And at an end, the meeting before the summer court of appeals is on Thursday. So we just, right now, what Lisa's gonna do is keep us on the track, trying to look for the path of Lisa's residence, but we do think that there's a decent possibility that the stop work order will be rescinded because of the way that this was sent to site planning. So it's possible that we will go through this and obviously we even move it if it's passed or approved with no conditions or conditions that are agreeable to the app, and that could substantially move the issue. But just wanted to let you know that's what's going on. So Lisa's gonna go through the plan with the public and answer any questions, but we just wanted you to know what's going on with the other one.
We aren't gonna be able to hear if we can, have the microphone.
You will hear me. So since the purpose of this meeting is to answer questions from the public, I'm going to start from the beginning and I'm going to be very thorough, so be patient with me. My name is Lisa McMillan, and I am a fourth generation Rhinebeck native, and I've lived in my house at 86 East Market Street for over 30 years. My mother lived there before me, and my grandmother and my great-grandmother before that. I'm requesting site plan approval to continue building a 12 by 20 accessory structure behind my home. The intended use of this building is for the purpose of an art studio, for my personal use. The original design for which the building permit was issued on June 25th of this year was to rebuild a 19 by 20 foot structure that on its existing footprint and create a shared garden and shed and studio space. However, on July 1st, zoning officer Mr. Fennell notified us that because this was a non-compliant structure and that it didn't meet setbacks requirements, that we would require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Given this opportunity to reevaluate, we discussed different options with Mrs. Mr. Fennell, and we changed the plan to the current proposal, which is laid out there. This included taking down half of the old shed, restoring the remaining half, including framing a new roof, and building a 12 by 20 building for the use of, as an art studio that would meet the dimensional requirements for setbacks as outlined in the village zoning code. And all of those setbacks are on that chart. Building was designed by local architect David Bornstein, who's here to answer questions. He is well-known for his restoration of several historic buildings in the area, and in fact, he received a citation from the Historic Society for his restoration of 9/11 South Street. As a property owner in the Historic District, he is indeed sensitive to the considerations of historic preservation. In the design process, he referenced the surrounding buildings, including two significant accessory structures in the site of the proposed structure. That is, these are pictured here. So you can clearly see the visual similarities between those and similarities in style, structure, and design. He also referenced the many two-story accessory structures with high peak roofs in the Historic District. And I have previously provided photos of about a dozen of them, and here there are photos of maybe a dozen of them. This design for my structure uses traditional forms and is consistent with the architecture and the neighborhood, and again, does not exceed the height or the volume of three other accessory buildings, all within sight. It was also designed to protect a large sugar maple tree in the yard and to preserve space for the garden. The building has a cathedral ceiling on a 12 by 20 portion in the front, and this provides a painting wall for tall worms. It has windows to allow north light to come in, and it creates a unique and efficient space for the design of shelving, storage, and display structures with a library ladder system. The proposal does not increase traffic to residents, as the studio is only for personal and family use. It does not increase usage of water or waste disposal means. Water supply from the existing water service is requested and pending approval of the village water department. The slab is roughed out for a toilet, however, the current interior plan does not include space for this, and at this time, we will remain dormant and unattached to the septic. If we choose to add this option in the future, all requirements from the Department of Health, which would include upgrading the current system, will be met and all necessary approvals obtained. The building will include electrical service, and it's also roughed out for reading and floor. Per code, there will be light above each door, but they will be well shaded, and the high windows will be shaded from the inside at night in order to avoid light pollution. The materials are consistent with those recommended in Chapter 120 of the zoning law. The siding is a rough-sown pine lumber from a local sawmill. The roof will be a raised seam metal roof found on many buildings in Rhinebeck. The restoration of the existing garden shed was part of our original permit, and more than half of that structure has been removed, and the remaining structure is eight and a half by 19. The original siding, doors, and windows have been preserved and will be used in restoration, which I believe keeps this structure, the replacement structure, under 50%. The former zoning officer approved the reframing of the roof to find as 25% of the structure, with the stipulation that the side yard overhangs were not extended. The carpenter understood this restriction, but did increase the pitch of the new frame, and that did increase the height of the roof by about one foot. The size of the building was not otherwise altered, except to make it initially smaller. If directed, I'm willing to return the roof to the original pitch. Without the guidance of the zoning officer, the correct course of action regarding this structure is unclear. As noted in my proposal, there are quite a few examples of other lots in the Historic District that have two accessory buildings. I think it's clear that the replacement of the unattractive old structure which was in decline with the restored shed and a beautiful new studio will enhance my progress, as well as the neighborhood. I follow the guidelines set out in Chapter 120 of the zoning code and actually become very familiar with it. The code talks about the village's economic success through attraction of new investments and the promotion of tourism, and Dutchess County is really big on the arts, and it exploits this in a lot of ways with art studio tours and such things. And Rhinebeck is really behind Red Hook in this kind of tourism, promoting that kind of tourism. It talks about enhancing the village's attractiveness to residents and visitors as a stimulus to local economy. We have local builders, and most of our supplies are coming from Williams lumber, so that's very local. It talks about to ensure the healthy, orderly, and efficient development of the village and promote cultural, education, economic, and general welfare to the public. I believe it meets those requirements. It talks about compatibility with the surrounding historic properties, and I think that this representation, you know, shows that clearly, that is in terms of heights, setbacks, roof shapes, and proportions. It discusses recommended materials, which I paid close attention to. It also talks about the preservation of mature trees, which was a big consideration for us. And number seven here says the Historic District includes an eclectic mix of buildings. Adding interest and a variety to the street state is appropriate. New structures can be differentiated from historic buildings and show progress over time primarily in details and variations on overall historically compatible themes. I believe we accomplished that. It talks about the scale of the proposed alteration being appropriate to the property, and our limitation is 30% in the Historic District, and these only cover 16%. All of the footprints cover 16% of the lot. And Section 3 here says, "In your interpretation and application, the provisions of this chapter shall be held to the minimum requirements for promotion of health, safety, convenience, comfort, and general welfare." So I've become very familiar with the code and believe that I've followed its guidelines closely in developing this. I really believe that any suggestion that I have been less than forthcoming in regard to the intended purpose of this building or any of its design elements would be very surprising to the planning and zoning employees who have received literally dozens of phone calls and emails and visits from me to make sure that I was following every little detail and doing everything I needed to be doing. I reasonably relied on them to guide me through this process, as they have done, with great patience and professionalism. And finally, to my neighbors who are so upset by this building. To my neighbor, I love you, and it's my spiritual imperative. And I'm so sorry that this is so difficult for you, and I really sympathize, because just as you feel that my building is not keeping with the historic architecture and is, as you called it, obtrusive, I felt this exact same way about your seven-foot-tall, I don't know, 120-foot-long fence. There are no historic references for such a fence, and for a long time, it made me physically sick to look at. I missed the openness of my yard and the view of the lawn all the way to the storm, and I felt so strongly about it that I begged my neighbors on the west side to not put up a fence. And I have done everything I can to be the kind of neighbor that doesn't need to be fenced But I never, never once questioned your right to have such a fence, and in all these years, I have never conceded about it. And I got used to it, because this is village life.
I will stay on topic.
Lisa, let's stay on topic.
Thank you, Lisa.
This is the topic, this is the reason we're here, because of these complaints.
Lisa, you mentioned that this is your home, but could you please clarify for people who
Well, I'd like to hear the complaints from the public.
don't know that, you don't own the home?
Can I have your name and address?
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vicki Hap, at 88 East Market Street.
I can get up and read this again.
So we're neighbors, Lisa's.
I am really grateful to live in a community that cares so much about this physical appearance.
We're the folks with the fence. That was in, when we built it, it was in code, and it was also part of a requirement with
I love Rhinebeck, and I truly believe that this will make Rhinebeck better.
regard to the Catholic Church.
Do you want to have your?
So that was when the Catholic Church purchased the property from the school district.
If you'd like to speak, please state your name and your address, and come up to
So the first thing I'd like to, is, go ahead.
No, I just want to stay on the topic.
Yes, exactly. So, okay. All right, I would like to start by thanking the village planning board members for providing
the microphone, please.
objective and thoughtful adherence to the zoning laws that protect the village of Rhinebeck,
Do I speak? If I'm going to answer questions.
its Historic District, and the quality of life for the property owners who have made the village their home. On October 1st, the planning board passed a motion to make a negative recommendation regarding the four-foot, 11-inch fence built on the property located at 86 Market on Montgomery Street. The finding was that it could set a precedent for all properties along Route 9, and that it is incompatible with the historic character of the neighborhood. The motion was carried by a five-to-zero vote. The planning board now has the same opportunity to preserve the historic character of the Four Sisters and avoid a precedent for future obtrusive accessory buildings by restricting the height of the 25-foot-high structure being built at 86 East Market Street. It is important to note that the five 50-foot by approximately 170-foot parcels that comprise the Four Sisters each has only one accessory building, all less than 16 feet high. Because of this consistency in height and placement on the properties, there is a true aesthetic value to the properties, as well as adherence to the original intention of Historic District overlay zoning laws. The 25-foot-tall building not only fractures this visual aesthetic, but imposes on the neighbors who will have to live with this towering structure looming over their backyards. In Nancy Kelly's book, Rhinebeck's Historic Architecture, Mrs. Kelly specifically commented on the historic value of the Four Sisters, noting that houses built in a row in other portions of the village and surrounding communities could learn much about the value of complementary paint, landscaping, and ornamentation from studying these four buildings. A 25-foot accessory building hardly complements these historically recognized treasures. I have included a rendering of what the proposed building would look like upon completion, asking that the board keep in mind that the height of the building that we all and you all are looking at, currently looking at, is only two-thirds of the final height. The proposed height of the accessory building with the roof totals more than half again the current 16 feet, for a total of 25 feet. That is a very tall building in the middle of a property. The original application, as Lisa noted, requested approval for the replacement of an aging garden shed, that which was perceived to be an acceptable one-story accessory building and similar to those that exist on the neighboring Four Sisters properties. In light of the fact that a one-story-high structure would maintain the same square footage of working space for the current tenant, without the neighbors being under siege by a 25-foot tower, I ask that the planning board members enforce the Historic District overlay zoning laws, which I've read thoroughly also, and restrict the approval to one, one-story accessory building not to exceed the height of the existing Four Sisters accessory buildings. Respectfully submitted, Vicki Hap.
Anyone else like to speak? Please state your name and address.
My name is Lesley McNeil, I live at 27 South Street and, I, sorry, I live at 25 South Street, and I own 27 South Street, where the property is just behind, and I own probably one of the structures that you're talking, that you have the pictures of, at a barn that's of that height. The reason why I wanted to say something was because I have a very strong feeling about historical precedent in the village of Rhinebeck. I've had three awards from the Historic Society pertaining to the additions that I've put on my property, because I felt very strongly that I had to comply with those regulations. I've appeared before the board in order to make sure that my additions were in concert. My main concern about this is about precedent. If in fact, as neighbors, we had not said, "This needs to be reviewed," nothing would have happened, the building would have just gone wrong. I think in terms of the process, it is important that a new structure in the Historic District be looked at and decided whether it is in fact something that is appropriate, and if it in fact is not in bringing on the neighbors' light or on how they live in their own backyards. And I just, I'm repeating and endorsing what Vicki has said, the concern about precedent in the Historic District of Rhinebeck, in the Historic, or the village. Thank you. That's it.
Anyone else like to speak?
May I stay where I am? May I stay here, or do I have to look front?
Could you please come to the microphone and state your name and your address?
My name is Lois Amaru. I live in the town of Rhinebeck that precludes my town. Okay. Historical preservation should not be written in stone. Precedent is not another word for keeping something the way it is forever. The Supreme Court of the United States demonstrates all the time that precedent is not written in stone. I think the point here should be whether this building, this tower, as it's been described, is in keeping with the integrity of those four buildings. If you walk around places in this country that put a great deal of store by precedent and preservation and tradition, such as Harvard, Yale, a few places like that, you become immediately aware that the Harvard Yard is not Harvard. That wherever you go in Cambridge, you will see evidences of wonderful architecture that does not in any way take away from the beauty of the old buildings. I don't have to vote any farther than Bard College. Bard College has, pays homage to contemporary architecture by building buildings that fit very beautifully into that canvas, which I have to admit is an eclectic place, but that's okay. I'll make this as quick as I can, I tend to be a former teacher, and it's a disease we have. I said earlier, the question should be, does this building stay with the integrity of the Four Sister houses? Is it a house that, a building that will detract and be obtrusive? I think the answer is no. First of all, it was designed by a very, very capable architect, designer, who has been well-educated. It isn't fully in keeping what is done, despite its height. It will be built of the same materials. The roof will not be flamboyant. There is nothing about that building that could be possibly objectionable to people who saw, because when it's done, it's going to be beautiful. It's going to be an absolutely beautiful building. And the only problem that some neighbor has is that they don't like it. That's not really enough. So I urge the board to keep in mind what the building is going to look like afterwards, and pass judgment on that. Thank you.
A Dodge Crane Village resident, I've observed the construction of the building that's proposed to be completed in the confines of the Four Sisters, and I urge the board to reduce it to a one-story structure consistent with the structure of the buildings around it, and so that it doesn't disturb the profile and the structure of the buildings around it. I think particularly setting a precedent of outbuildings that are of that size and structure in a historically sensitive part of the district is really not a good idea in precedent in the short term and the long term. I think there are precedents that the board sets, I don't think this is a good one. And just in comment to my good friend Lou's comment, I have grown up on the Bard campus, and while there are a number of wonderful new structures, there are a number of structures there that there is significant regret on because the architectural nature of them is not consistent with the rest of the, rest of the campus, and I think that could be true of this project as well. Strongly urging to reduce this to a one-story structure and keep the backyards and neighborhood in a kind of a consistent landscape. Thank you.
I own a residence at 124 East Market Street in the village. It's on Historic Register. I've lived here since I was five, lived in the village for a good 20 years, and I don't see any inconsistencies in this building as far as its architectural nature. I think it fits in very nicely with its surroundings. I think particularly setting a precedent of outbuildings that are of that size and structure in a historically sensitive part of the district is really not a good idea in precedent in the short term and the long term. I think there are precedents that the board sets. I don't think this is a good one. Just in comment to my good friend Lou's comment, I have grown up on the Bard campus and while there are a number of wonderful new structures, there are a number of structures there that there is significant regret on because the architectural nature of them is not consistent with the rest of the, rest of the campus. And I think that that could be true of this project as well. Strongly urging to reduce this to a one-story structure and keep the backyards and neighborhood in a kind of a consistent landscape. Thank you.
I'm Mary Jane Montalto. I own a residence at one-twenty-four East Market Street in the village. It's an historic, it's on the historic register. I've lived here since I was five, lived in the village for a good twenty years, and I don't see any inconsistencies in this building as far as its architectural nature. I think it fits in very nicely with its surrounding structures. The idea that there are no two-story accessory buildings in the village is quite false, and you all know that. I've looked at the plans, I've visited the site, and I really see no inconsistencies architecturally with this building, and I agree, it's going to be beautiful. It will not detract from its neighbors, it will probably enhance the neighborhood.
Anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Spiro Chumas. I live at eighty-eight East Market Street. Vicki and I are co-owners of eighty-eight East Market Street. Before I address the board, is it appropriate to ask a question of the applicant or the Apparently you did mention that that would be part of the discourse. And when we first looked at this project, we were told the shed was being rebuilt. Fine. And then when we saw the footing and all the work going in place, I came over and talked to Lisa, and she showed me a set of plans for what appeared to be a house, not a shed. Okay, you may disagree that it's not a home. We left it at that, I was quite surprised to see an architectural rendering of this structure that was supposed to be the replacement of a shed that we had looked at for some twenty-five years. So this is a bit of a shock. Aside from the fact that our architect informed us that anything in the historical district, any outbuilding or new structure, required site plan review and the planning board approval. Now that may not be, you guys may not have gone to the same school, I don't know, but that was our impression and our assumption, that how it worked, that there was some integrity in the process, and that a licensed professional would observe with the letter of the law regarding what would happen, in which case Lisa and I and Vicki would not have had this issue, because this argument and this conversation would have.
It would have been public if we had gone through the process, as we had been instructed,
because we had intended to do something.
We're looking for a question in terms of.
Right. So when I saw the septic installed, and I saw the work going in the ground, I went over and talked to Lisa and David, and I was quite surprised that I could see the spot up for a toilet going into a building that was supposed to be a shed. At that point, I was told that, having worked for the health department and knowing the Board of Health approval would be required for such a thing, that there was a second septic system on the property that this was plugged into. Is that correct?
Basically, nothing except as far as.
Okay, very good. So there isn't a second, there is not a second septic system on that property?
There is a septic, a second septic system on the property, however.
Okay, so I'm partially right.
Under no circumstances is that building attached to any septic system.
So if you thought, if you put a five-gallon bucket of water in that spud up, it disappears.
I would welcome you to do so.
Okay, so it'll overflow. That, that's fair enough. Regarding the, the rest of the process, the garage that was on the side was expanded, was actually expanded. And when we discussed this with our attorney, who we only consulted with, before this order, this cease and desist order was issued, we were told that this is probably not being seen as an accessory structure, but an accessory dwelling, which would require a subdivision, the same thing Bill Clark went through down the street, and that the garage that was expanded would require a variance, would have to go to the ZVA. The notion that this in any way conforms to the existing architecture, for what we have to see from our house, we disagree. You can't legislate their taste, that's why boards are here. It's up to you to decide what fits within the village. But John, at the last meeting, when you were talking about Bill Clark's issue, you talked about the issue of screening the trees. We put our fence up, which Lisa objected to, because her cars are parked in her driveway full-time outside our dining room window. We wanted some privacy. We can't plant trees high enough to screen this building out. We can't get them big enough. And we would like to screen it out if, in fact, that were to happen. So we're hoping that you will bring this down to a reasonable size, she'll still have the same amount of working space. This argument does become legal. She'll still have her working space if it's not a domicile. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
But anyone else like to speak?
My name is Veronica Standeporth. I live at four Jane Street, Rhine Cliff, and I've been a lifelong resident of Rhinebeck, the town of Rhinebeck. And I've seen the village and Rhine Cliff go through many changes over the years, and I certainly do not believe that Lisa's structure is going to impede in that whatsoever. And if some of you are not familiar with Lisa, I certainly am. I have been a friend of hers for almost forty years, and I can certainly assess, you know, give her the benefit of, of being a wonderful person and a talented artist, and so I can, you know, attest for her character. But if you're not familiar with her work, it's quite large, so she does need space for this. And I feel that if this structure is, you know, has to be altered, that it's going to really be difficult for her to create her art, and this would take away from local artists in the area and hinder their work.
My name is David Warrenstein, and I'm the architect of this building. I actually break into prompts here myself, I wasn't saying. There's a couple of things that I think are very important for everyone here to understand. Under no, under no circumstances, ever, was that building a dwelling. Never. And I don't, and I resent that I'm being accused of putting up a dwelling, when that's in fact not true. It has never been hooked up to a septic system. It is a one-story structure. The structure immediately in back of it is taller, of the same proportions, and I see absolutely no reason that this studio lawfully cannot be built. It is not a dwelling. It doesn't meet the criterion of a dwelling. Structural wise, if someone moved there tomorrow, the, the building code says that that cannot be a building that is under square foot, it doesn't have a shower in it, and it, and yes, it would need Department of Health approval, but the, the laws in this town do not say, or this building do not say, they do not say you can't put a toilet in an accessory structure. You're not increasing the load of the building. Not at all. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Tim Valentino. I am a resident of Rhinebeck, chose to live here thirty years ago. I've been living in the same house as a tenant for twenty years. I care about the integrity, the historical integrity of this town, this village, it means so much to me. I went to the property today, I looked at the plans, I looked in the backyard, I looked at the roof peaks. Some are higher, some are higher. I looked at your house. I don't see where you're going to have to look at that. It's not going to impede the sunset views for you. It's not right outside your windows. It's in the back, in the middle of the yard, in the middle of gardens. I just, a precedent, when you're setting a precedent for new buildings in this town, which I could go on and on about, because I walk these streets, and I have been for twenty years, looking at new buildings, and I'm shocked at what's gone up and what's been approved. I won't name any names or places, but, um, a precedent is, you said it, that's why we have these boards, so a precedent isn't made, so every time somebody wants to put up something new, it has to go through a board, it has to be thought out and planned out, so, and I thank you all for doing that and serving on these boards. So that's what I have to say. And I thought this was a good one, and I think the building's beautiful.
My name is Alan Lippert, and I live at fifteen Beach Street, own a home there for twenty-two years. I am here as a character witness for Lisa. I, I love, I love Rhinebeck, I'm not an expert on what the historic district is supposed to have or not supposed to have. But if the objection to her having this is that she is a liar and misleading people about what her intentions are, and if that's the main point that we're worrying about, it is, it is horrendously false. Lisa is a loving, wonderful, positive human being who would never mislead anybody about anything, and is putting her heart and soul into this, and I believe, I believe in her.
Anyone else like to speak? I have some letters submitted, and since the people, you know, didn't come to speak, I should read the letters into the record. I am Susan LaFosse. I reside at one-twenty-eight East Market Street, and I'm writing in support of the proposed accessory building application by Lisa McMillan. Our residence is three blocks away, also in the HDO. I feel a two-story accessory structure is consistent with the existing historic outbuildings that are common throughout the village of Rhinebeck. The barn in my property, which dates to eighteen-seventy-nine, is a two-story structure, approximately seventeen feet in height. It's my opinion that the proposed building would be in keeping with Rhinebeck's existing historic outbuildings. There's a letter from Lisa Pinto, Associate Broker at Northern Duchess Realty. I'm writing this in reference to the property occupied by Lisa McMillan at eighty-six East Market Street in the village of Rhinebeck. I'm a licensed real estate associate broker with Northern Duchess Realty in the village of Rhinebeck, and I want to let the board know that I have seen the building plans from Miss McMillan's studio at the above address. I find it in keeping with the historic character of the neighborhood. I think it will be an asset to the surrounding community. The design is very tasteful, and the quality of the building construction materials is excellent. I'm certain that once it is finished, the studio will have charm style and be a lovely addition to the neighboring homes. Thank you for your consideration. I have a letter from Judith Johnson. I have recently become aware of the controversy regarding the construction of an artist studio at eighty-six East Market Street in the village of Rhinebeck. I've seen the construction plans and visited the site. As far as I can tell, the proposed structure falls within the building codes of the historic district regulations. In addition, its size and height are keeping with other structures visible in the neighborhood. I'm aware of the fact that there have been a lot of heated emotions and opinions about this project, that they are no relevant to the residents' right to proceed with construction. I trust the village planning board will reach a fair and unbiased decision in this matter. And one more, from Amy Olson, twelve Livingston Street. As a resident of the historic district of the village of Rhinebeck, I'd like to voice my support for Lisa McMillan and her desire to build a studio in the back of her house at eighty-six East Market Street. I've seen the plans, and I think the design is in keeping with the historic building of Rhinebeck, and I understand the design was approved by the board and is without any violations. Her art studio will make a fine addition to our lovely town, and I would like to see her be able to proceed with the building without any further delay or harassment to silly Amy Olson. And there's one last letter, which I guess I can skip, from Beverly Lippert, because her husband just spoke and said much of what was in the letter. So are there any more comments from the public?
Excuse me? My husband and I are separate people.
Okay. I didn't know you were here. Would you like to come up and speak?
I'm waiting to hear my letter.
I, I, I think the normal policy is if you're here, you should come and present what you're going to say.
Well, I'll read my letter if you don't want.
That's fine. Would you like to read your letter into the record? I didn't know, I didn't know you were here.
Well, now you know.
Clearly. Please step up to the microphone.
My name is Beverly Lippert, if you hadn't figured that out. And this is my letter to the planning board. I'm writing in support.
The microphone is on.
Microphone? I am writing in support of Lisa McMillan's proposal to build an art artist studio at eighty-six East Market Street. As a longtime village resident, I thoroughly understand the importance of the balance between preservation and growth. And in addition, I understand the impact we all have on our close neighbors. Having seen the plans, I believe that the neighbors on East Market Street would benefit from the artist studio designed by the talented and tasteful architect David Warrenstein, and that their backyard view will be enhanced. Sincerely, Beverly Lippert.
Before we close the public hearing, does anyone else like to speak?
Can I?
Do you have a?
I just want to add, I'm Judith Johnson. You read my letter, and I had a PS there. I have been a resident of Rhinebeck for seventeen years, and in the village itself for two and a half.
I would just like to say one more. The complaints and the issues that we had were not about Lisa's character, they're not about the taste or the look of the building, it is about the height, it's about the fact that it's a two-story without a, without a floor, so it's not a functioning second story. And it seems to us that, given that it's causing such consternation with the neighbors, that there might be another way to give you everything that you want in the studio and still make the neighbor, the neighbors feel that they, that there has been some thoughtful process going on here. I'm not saying there hasn't been thoughtful process, but to say that we have been maligning your character or the taste of the building, that's not the issue. The issue is useful space, and they need to go this high to get northern light. You can get a forty-five-degree angle on, on the northern light without having to get straight up. These are double-hung windows, which do require ladders to open, and it makes me wonder, is there not another solution? Is there not another way to look at this that keeps everybody happy and that keeps the integrity of the district? But it's not about your integrity, it's not about the integrity of the septic.
Anyone else like to speak? Most of the public here. About a second? Or was it better? If you have questions, you may move on.
Question, maybe the attorney should ask this. Are you asking us to go ahead with a vote on site plan approval, or would you prefer us to wait until the ZVA is active?
Well, you know, even if it's approved, it doesn't completely loop the issue that we have in terms of whether this should be in site plan or not. And the reason is, is, and I can discuss that with Lisa, but I think, you know, she can decide to drop it, but if it's approved and we don't pursue the appeal, my only concern is, is that any change she makes on this that's part of the plan would require her to come back here to you. And under the current code, you know, I, maybe she'll agree to submit for that, I don't know, but, but I think that since, it doesn't come to me, we didn't do the appeal after the initial application was made, and this was already scheduled for public hearing and noticed by, by Karen, so I thought it would make sense to go through this, and maybe we will hold the ZVA, it's approved, and it just limit it. But, but it doesn't completely loop the issue. It certainly simplifies things, you know, if you go through your process. And of course, there's a chance that the ZVA might, you may not, you know, there's always a chance you don't prevail. I think we have a very strong case, but there's always that possibility.
Karen, why do, why do you think that this is exempt from the historic preservation?
Well, first of all, if you've looked at the stop work on, the stop work, where this is, it's because the village board can require this to go in site plan, that's the reason of the stop work, at its discretion, which there is no such statute or rule that I'm aware of. And it was never even on the village board, the agenda or plan or the schedule, no resolution there.
You're not questioning, are you questioning whether this, whether new construction in the historic district?
It has to be, it has to be greater than a two-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot footprint in order to be site plan approved.
Right, that's not the interpretation that we've worked with in terms of.
Well, if you look at it, then why have that sentence?
There's legal disagreement, I guess, in terms of.
Why have that sentence in the thing? I mean, but that's really the ZVA, that's not really for you, but you don't need that second sentence if that's what the board wants. But I think it would make sense to proceed, you know, that's why we're doing tracking it.
It seems to me that the, during the complaints, the primary issue is the height. There's two requests, as I've got it boiled down to neighbors would prefer one accessory building rather than two, and they are upset about the height. And other people have expressed the same concern about the height in relation to other accessory buildings. I think you could debate that. Certainly, there's plenty of two-story carriage houses and accessory buildings in the backyard of Reinbeck Historic District houses. And you've shown some of those. I guess the question should be asked, can the height be reduced without inhibiting the function of your artist's work to something, I think the woman over here expressed, a compromise, you know, something more 16 or 17 feet is still two-story, still loft, still... I'm just asking that as a question. Is there a function to that extra height, that extra five or seven or 18 feet height?
You're asking us to--
I would be interested because the designer, like, this usable space, I would wonder if there was such a limitation to put on my structure, if that limitation would apply to the entire historic district. Somebody even mentioned only allowing one-story buildings. You know, so that would be my concern.
If I may reiterate that a little more directly, that one of the issues here is that Lisa is a certified master gardener among other things. And we started this early on as a place in the initial structure, we wanted to leave as much garden space, space on the ground as possible. So making that, the first rendition had two floors, and that was in order to store it and have it come up into the tree like a treehouse. And currently, by removing the floor, what we have is a system of, like I have in my shop, shelves with library lefts, so you can still utilize that space. But the argument being that yes, it is, does gain height vertically, but now we're not spreading that distance out horizontally and cutting in on the permeability of the yard. Saving the tree, we needed gymnastics to save that tree. The foundation is a floating foundation, Lisa dug around the roots themselves. We did everything we can to make that a garden space that she toils in every single day of the summer, with the exception of this summer. So the answer to the question is, it is more space for storage. More garden, more open space.
But to me, could you, could you lower, then would you have every building in the historic district be not higher than that? Is that what you would be--
I was just asking, in the question, would have a function out in this space?
I hope I answered that question.
I think it's your point that if she agrees to lower it, you don't have to consider that, making that condition of an approval.
I'm not suggesting it be a condition, I'm just asking a question.
You have to understand the difference between comparing existing and new construction. That, you know, for instance, we do not permit front yard parking. There's many houses in the village that have front yard parking because they were built 100, 150 years ago. Someone builds a house today, you say the code now says you have to put a garage behind the house, you have to have back yard parking. So to say that it's comparative to other buildings in the historic district, if those buildings are old, it's not the same thing as a new structure, so, you know, that's not a good comparison, but still, it's a question as to whether or not this violates the code and, you know, I'm not sure--
There are a couple of issues here. One is, as I understand it, there's no need for any variance based upon the structure. It does not exceed the size, the location is not within any of the setbacks, it does not exceed the height limitation for a structure. So there's no, you're not making any request for a variance, which unlike the fence on Montgomery Street, that was a variance issue where there was a need to make a judgment in terms of whether or not the planning board could support or not the fence taller than what was allowed in the code. My understanding is your structure does fit within the code. No, I understand that. And I guess I would also suggest that going around the village, and I've been around for a few years, that there are a lot of two-story structures, two-story barns. Many of the older barns, the older outbuildings in the village are in fact two-story, and the ones that are single-story tend to be the newer structures. You know, so that in terms of, from a historical perspective, it's probably more in character to have a two-story structure than a one-story structure. And given that it's within the setbacks and by all appearances, it satisfies the criteria in terms of the historic district, in terms of building materials and aesthetic features, that I would find it difficult not to approve it because there's no criteria through which to not approve it that I could consistently support.
I think it also, I think I would have a apartment that was 35 feet high, still a feet fit within the height limitation, but it could clearly not be an accessory structure. This does have a step-down quality, it's shorter than the house. It also has a front portion that is shorter and then the back section tapers up, sets back. So I think, again, that provides a transition between the lower and the higher height.
That's the opposite. The base is 25 feet high, facing north, and the step-back is to the south.
Just read the arrow there. There is one way it does conflict with the historic district law, and that's the width of proportion. It says here, "Individual window proportions shall be greater in height than width." And some of your windows look square. Is that, that has to be fixed if it needs it is--
It says width. Yes. Not mandatory. However, if that's an issue, I don't, I can speak to Lisa, which is the architect there, who's seen that that could be accommodated. Again, I'm only saying that, but that's Lisa's decision.
That is required and shall, shall be, the individual windows shall be greater in height than width. And it doesn't say by certain proportions, it just has to be vertical in orientation, not within square or horizontal proportion. And several of the windows--
They are absolutely square. And you got Hillary Clinton, yes, is the answer. But that's what that law said.
The original drawings, which also show the second story, show these windows here, which were then replaced with the double-hung windows on the windows, not on the second floor. So would that be something that would be in line with what you were looking for?
Unnecessarily. Alls I'm saying is that if the window is 40 inches tall, it has to be more vertical than horizontal. It's somewhat minimal, that's--
Well, wood is, you know, collectively, when you're looking at it here, three separate windows. And then when you put them together, they come on, they're facing, so far as I know, maybe I'm in the wrong. But these are, they are, Lisa.
I would say that that is-- This is not--
If you put one ceiling over top of the other, you want individuals to know that visually it would look like--
If that--
Here's the reality, you don't have to go to that extreme. It just has to be taller than it is wide. And I believe we've dealt with this issue in terms of those are separate windows.
They still have to be individually--
Then with each another, it has to be 21 inches high and 20 inches wide, or something like, something like that, too. Technically, I guess the idea is we don't, we don't want to encourage picture windows, you know, so maybe the code is written in such a way that it eliminates or reduces the option in terms of square windows, which are probably not inappropriate for this type of structure. Think it's going to be painted or stained?
I've decided exactly, I'm thinking of blue, something I can receive.
Site plan color is one of the things we have to have, a determination.
Just the sand is finished and a lot of the natural is finished, not sealed, but finished.
Unpainted lumber, show me.
So that you prevent staining.
As I read this, no, these are recommended.
Recommended.
That one is not a requirement, that's a recommendation. So I think unfinished lumber would probably be something that I wouldn't encourage, but something with a stain with a color in it would be--
Solid color stain would be, for all intents and purposes, that's not a whole lot different than paint.
Something that complements the color of the house. The house is gray. That would be acceptable as far as the lighting.
I don't see anything wrong with this accessory structure. It meets the code. The only thing you can argue is compatibility in terms of height, and I think there's enough of a case being made that there's sufficient accessory buildings in the historic district that are multi-story or taller than the one-story building. I agree with Tim. The one-story buildings tend to be, the newer ones on the road has worked on, tend to be taller. So other than the width of proportions, I don't see anything drastically wrong with this, and I don't think we need to be setting a precedent by saying that this is an appropriate building in the historic district.
And there also is nothing in the code that limits the number of accessory structures. The current code, it limits the number of accessory structures, so someone can have more than one accessory structure. As the code is clear, as long as they satisfy all the other criteria in terms of coverage, the location is not within the setbacks, things like that, so. So you increase the pitch of the roof, which, and how much, how much space is it between the five feet? At a minimum, I would probably want you to have a gutter that would direct any water off the roof onto your property and have that to mitigate any additional drainage that might occur because of the increased pitch of the roof.
You're putting the original siding back in terms of--
The original siding, the doors, the windows, they all-- The rotten boards inside need to be replaced, whatever's on the ceiling, we should do that.
Some of the siding would be rotten, so we're doing what we can do.
It's all going to be replaced with wood and pine.
Yes, yes. May I add one more thing?
Yes.
The window, please don't, not be a wise side, but I realize that it's the law that suits--
Someone, that the width of proportion is the vertical appearance.
How do we determine the verticality of these windows to your acceptance?
We'll send it to us and revise plan for the record.
That would be fine. However, it is our objective to remove a stop work order at this point to resume construction. I have a second.
I'll say it. Are there any other--
Any other things other than the window?
Well, if you painted or stained.
Painted or stained, you submit the color.
When? When do you want this? When's the end?
I mean, you've granted site plan approval, so it's--
However, the board--
However, the board is going to document, but we don't have any dimensions. That's discretion, I'm sorry.
Have we both rolled into paper?
Aye.
Pick it up and move it. So you could fill in the holes here or--
Pop these trees out as long as I don't, he can't transport, his biggest problem is transporting any distance.
Right.
Because then all the dirt moves off the roof.
Right.
And I have already, one of them has become here to replace this tree.
Oh. What about taking those two and putting them--
There and there.
Well, this one still seems to be pretty viable.
That's fine, if you're thinking--
Sure, we'll move it all together, we'll just leave it there and see what happens.
All right.
And then if it dies, and if this doesn't work, then we'll be back to--
Okay.
And then if it dies of natural causes, then--
All right. So one of these will move here?
That can happen, yes.
That can happen, okay. And then get rid of those two trees and that tree right there. And that should significantly impact your summer sign issue.
Yeah.
You know, this one's going to be an issue, you're also going to be on the street now.
All right, you can try to-- To a certain degree.
Right.
Because I thought about moving the sign up a little bit, and I came out of a mall the other day, and the sign was up on the street, and I couldn't see, I couldn't look in either direction to see cars coming, so it has to be back. There's no good way of putting it. So, all right, so are we in agreement? That one, two, three, and the neighbors are going to work on those weeping trees? I mean, I mean, yes.
And so one of these will go to the back of the property and this one will go to here?
Right, and then two of these--
Two of those will go to the back.
And then the shrubbery and all, that'll all go in around the signs to signify the entrance to the property.
I mean, obviously, you know, if we, at some point, you concur that we could not have a tree here, we can have additional evergreen landscaping here, you know, at the same height, which would shield more of the cars as the trees grow up. So that's something, you know, obviously, that's a way--
Or you can supplement the tree with low planting as well.
Right, exactly. Plain and clean trees.
That's right.
That's right.
That's what I would prefer, but I'm not requiring you to do, I mean, what you propose is reasonable.
It is.
But I'd like to save those two westernmost trees, trees in those locations.
Westernmost trees, these two. They're southern.
Well, in terms of--
Right.
We don't have a north-south on the plant.
They're southeastern, actually.
Oh, there it is, north, oh, okay. Semi-south.
So we'll move these into there, put the other two in the back, they'll do their thing with us.
And the planting's in the front.
And that will not create visibility all the way up here, but it will create visibility starting, I think I figured, someplace around here.
More of them to shine.
Right, oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Right, I think, you know, the mall is not, is a destination. It's not like most of the stores, like UPS, people go there because they're there. It's not like, ooh, there's a sale on something in that mall, so it-- Just need to see the entrance enough to see that it's there, slow down and go in there. Right, good. We agreement?
Okay, and the sign, no changes, you know, the changes that you showed us last--
Right. They're changing size, we're simply--
Right, just changing the font and the--
Mitt Hudson--
Prime tenant, more visible there because-- Prime tenant, more visible there because they feel sort of like stepchild in the back.
Okay.
Well, a lot of this is considered a branch.
Going in across the street.
They're a big competitor.
Right. This is Mid Hudson.
This is Mid Hudson Valley.
And they're Hudson Valley Federal.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan as proposed, which includes removal of three trees from their location and low planting to replace it. Two of the trees we placed on the back of the property, and one will be relocated to the sickly tree area in front.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
We brush through this.
You can stay for the rest of the.
I like your jacket, though, you know.
Lady Bill.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is John Vincent.
Hello again.
I hope so. Okay, you have some more stuff for us of what you're trying to do there.
There is the plot plan. Here we go. Here's from the three sides.
Do you have an architectural rendering in terms of the addition?
No, I'm only this far. There's what we see from South Street.
Right, so.
The roof is fourteen feet high.
So we're still missing the architectural rendering in terms of this.
So you mean fully dimensioned blueprints?
Right.
So you need that for planting? Oh, okay, I thought you were just looking at.
I think we need more than, and this is more than we had before, but it, but.
Not much.
Not enough to.
So blueprints, finished blueprints.
Elevations.
Drawings like this that include the entire structure from that side, so we can see it in the context.
From the north, from the west, and from the south.
And the existing.
Right.
Oh, okay.
The existing you have, right, this is, this is where the, where is the addition going?
Yeah, this, this would just move out eighteen.
This is where the addition's going, so this is what it currently looks like.
That's what it's going to look like, too.
Right, and this is the, the appearance of it from the street, and from the street.
Right.
See, a lot of people have.
I'm okay in terms of, of the presentation in terms of as it currently exists, but definitely want more details in terms of.
Oh, in terms of a blueprint?
Right.
Okay.
Well, not a blueprint, an elevation. In other words, scaled drawings in terms of what the, how it's going to look in terms of appearing.
In relation to the existing, so you want the height of the existing showing the height of the new?
And the finished materials, in other words, with.
Well, the finished materials will be absolutely identical to this, matching.
Then that should be, that needs to be shown on the.
And the original windows that fortunately exist, okay.
And then the dimensions indicated in terms of, of the windows of any of the details.
Is this enough visual, so it all now needs to be in the elevation blueprint? So you mean?
Well, that's certainly, normally, we ask for a full site plan, too, to show where this is in relation to your entire property.
Okay.
But.
Here's the side yard, this is the closest.
Right, but we normally want to see the, there's no structure behind it, but the structure to the left and to the right.
I guess we, we can see it there, it's not very clear.
Right.
Yeah. So a bigger shot, a bigger aerial, or you want it in pencil?
Normally, what we ask for is a survey map with the building on it and showing your neighbors, the relationship of your neighbors to your property line. You don't have a survey map in part of this?
I've got a survey, it, it's nuts and bounds, you know, it starts here, goes a hundred feet, relate, and back to the starting point.
Doesn't show your house on there in current fashion?
No.
Oh.
No, but I, I mean, I can come up with that on the, on a tax scheme map or something.
That's probably a good idea.
Right.
There is also on the computer, I don't know if you can pull it up, actually, no, probably not. The real property tax office can show buildings, I don't think you can do that on home computers.
So try again in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
I don't, you know, just so you know, the only thing I see in this that bothers me are these windows here. Is there a reason why those aren't windows that are more consistent with the windows in the house?
They are, they came from the house. They, they're, they're used around the house, and apparently, at some point, when this addition was done, these were just stored in the basement.
Okay, so that's the sort of thing, I can't see in those pictures, I don't see any.
I don't see any pictures of those windows.
Oh, okay.
Any place else on the house.
All right.
All I see is, is second floor.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, they're on the other sides, too.
See, John, a lot of people have come for various additions or porches, and usually they're in the back and not visible. This one is going to be on the side and visible from South Street in the historic district, so we really have to see what it looks like to make sure that it's, people are going to see this building, this addition.
So you mainly want to see what you'll see from the village.
Well, we want to see the three sides, from, from the south, from the west, and from the north. So from this angle, from that angle, and from the south.
And elevation.
An elevation, right.
We don't really see the view from a boat in the lake. We don't really see a view from a boat in the lake. That would be nice, but, yeah.
We actually do want to see it from that perspective.
Okay.
Oh, yeah?
Because it's on the, it's on the.
True, true.
All right.
It's on a backyard. All right, the next item on the agenda is Fair Oaks Realty Sitco amended site plan. Okay, do we have, here and here, or? Good evening.
It's so warm.
It's warm in here.
Many people fired up earlier.
So what did you guys come up with?
Apparently, we have a bit of a revision compared to what you saw the last time.
Okay.
We've got several copies.
People can hear them?
Okay.
Awesome. We've, we've determined through several different sources that we might have been a little short on the height, and we're now proposing fourteen-six as the bottom line of the canopy itself instead of, we had twelve feet.
So to give a large vehicle?
I mean, the stack of the truck is twelve, twelve-eleven.
Did you get a tractor trailer on there?
Tractor, well, the delivery trucks.
Oh, the delivery trucks.
Correct.
They might get underneath.
Exactly, exactly.
Tight spot.
Yes.
Otherwise, it won't.
Right.
Get stuck on the.
A memorable one.
So the tanker truck?
Yes.
I don't think a semi could get in and out of your spot.
Right.
Yeah. And then the other thing that you.
Also wanted to see some.
Wanted to see what it looks like.
This was the closest I could come up with, that is in Duchess County. They just did this in Grangefell. It doesn't have the.
It doesn't have the details.
The details, right. But, I mean, I think this looks nicer than this, if you agree with this, we'll do this.
And yours is not going to have the signs.
Correct.
Well, I like the details.
This is the closer one, sorry. And it also shows the way we're going to do the columns, with the brick column.
Oh, yeah. Brick columns?
Yes.
I have, to me, it's something that has to. To me, you would never have a brick column, you know, brick structurally wouldn't support a structure like that.
Oh, no, no, the actual, the column of the canopy is in the middle.
I understand, it doesn't physically support it, but it doesn't.
Though the facade of the structure is brick, so.
That's the only reason I.
That does look like a brick-supported building, you know. I'm reminded of the Dunkin' Donuts down in Hyde Park that put in stone columns, porch supports, and it looked phony because you would never have thin stone columns, and you would never have brick, you know.
So would you rather it's supposed to be?
Well, I'm wondering, you know, to me, it's, it's.
That's fine with us.
I know, many of my structures are mutually compatible with silver.
That's the only reason we put it there, otherwise.
I know. I'm bringing it up to be, now we have an example to look at, you think that looks strange? I think it does.
Yeah, we're basically talking about, you're going to have two, two.
Two columns.
Two columns, so you're basically.
Yeah.
So, I think, I think actually having more mass there actually makes a little bit more sense than having less mass.
Will the bricks match the structure?
The same.
Same bricks.
Otherwise, it's going to look like it's on two picks, if you just add.
Yeah, but that would be at least consistent with what the structural reality of the building is, you know, it wouldn't be a phony-looking brick facade, where you would never have a brick column like that, that was structural.
So whether you want it to be minimal, and concept of the canopy is to be minimal, or do you want it to be compatible with the building with the brick?
Right.
I think it's seen as light and airy as possible, so it's a minimal structure.
That's sort of my feeling.
Well, I like the brick, I think it matches the building, and if you're talking in interest to the historic district, it's more restored material as opposed to.
It's more 19th century history.
Are you going to flare it at the top like this?
We didn't draw it that way, but it could be.
You didn't draw it that way, yes.
I did have, one of the preliminary designs, I did have capitals. I guess the other advantage to the brick is that it tends to be less, less of a maintenance issue in many ways, so that, you know, when you have. You don't have to paint it. Right, you don't have to paint it, you don't have to deal with that period of time when it should be painted, but it's not yet painted, and.
Looks rusty.
Right.
I just wanted to bring that up as an issue.
I think we're probably in agreement, ideally, there would not be a gas station there.
Or a canopy there.
Or a canopy there, period. But it's not unreasonable to make the concession that, given the fact that the gas station is there, that we make it functioning for those people that use.
All right, I just wanted to bring it up as a, I'm okay if people like the.
It's all right. You don't need to be flared, though, that would just make it more massive, but the simple brick column would be.
And it's brick, it's not, it's not.
No, it is brick. Actually, it's the same brick that we used to finish the other side of the garage.
The other question I had was the three-and-a-half-foot height again, three foot four, I guess it is.
Well.
And that'd be narrower, to make this thing look less.
Sure, we can go three, thirty-six inches short.
Because I've looked at other ones, and they don't look, and it's hard for me to get up there and measure.
They are, most of the one you looked at, they're forty-eight inches.
They don't look that, for sure.
They don't, they, most of the ones that we've done are forty-eight inches.
Okay, but a single canopy, you know, a smaller canopy.
Correct, I mean, we can go.
Wider than.
That's not a problem.
As thin as is practically to make a most minimal canopy.
That, the only, only problem with that would be putting these in there, they would look too small. So if you don't mind, not putting these here and making it look like this, as opposed to putting these borders in.
I think you could still put the quarters in, just make them proportionally narrower.
A three-foot.
Yeah. If that's the minimum you need. Were there any other issues? What do we ask for? We ask for lighting.
Yes.
Photometric land that I got from the lighting company.
But the existing lights are gone, and these lights are recessed in the canopy?
Flush-mounted, flush-mounted, under the canopy.
They're LED.
They're LED.
They're about as thick as.
Yes.
Those are skeletons.
Yes.
Don't you tell me they were about as thick as that?
Yeah, just about.
Same.
Show us.
Basically, it goes like.
What we ask for, I think, is a site plan showing the foot candles on the site and at the edge of the site, so that we can determine if there were bright spots or spillover or glare or any of the rest of it. This doesn't do much for us.
No, I know. This is the thickness of the light, they use the same light that, it's basically as thick as this.
And how many of them are?
Six.
Six.
And do they, I mean, they look like they're flush-mounted, but are they, are they, will any of the light be horizontal?
No, it would be basically what you see here.
This is that thick?
Exactly. This is what you see under it.
So all the light will be projected down, not horizontally out.
Exactly.
And nobody will be able to see the actual light source from the side or the street.
Right.
But I still think we, but I still think we want a site plan with the photometric on.
We'd like to see it, you know, where it's going to hit the ground.
Where it's going to hit the ground.
So we make sure they're even as close to the street, you know.
And then we don't want hotspots, you know, where it's glowing at more than, you know, four or five-foot candles in the center, because then it becomes a sort of.
Bright spot.
Yes. Nothing over that way is very bright. You don't need a lot of light in order to pump gas. Most people, most gas stations use the lights as advertising rather than safety issue, in my opinion. And so they want to make it as bright as possible so that it stands out from the street. We don't need that in the village, and so the minimal amount of light you need to be safe pumping gas. And we want to make sure that that's sort of more even rather than having real bright hotspots, more of a consistent light, but not more than, you know, any, you're going to be right at the sidewalk, so it's going to be hard not to have some spill all around the street, but you're going to try to contain that as much as possible.
You're also going to be driving up the hill, and it's going to be uphill.
You'll see.
You're going to see more of it than you would if it was on a, or should not be dramatic, but there's a tree.
Yeah, also, that, the one that you showed us had a very shiny surface on the bottom.
Yes, they all are.
Yeah, I know, I was just wondering if there can be a matte finish rather than a shiny surface, so it doesn't.
It's manufactured finish to withstand the weather, basically, that's what they're using. So she's, she, exactly.
Yeah, and you can have a flat enamel or a shiny enamel thing, don't you?
But you will not see it the way you see it in this picture.
Well, that's why, when you go to these places, there's this big shiny object above, hanging above you, and if it, the more we can recess this and make it less like a big shiny object, the better.
Well, let me draw your attention to that fixture, it is, there's zero up light. And anything that would underlight it is going to be reflection light.
I think that's what the answer was, I was trying to find my minutes to make sure, but I'm buried under all this paperwork. Yeah, also I have a lighting plan. So if we can get that, I think we can move on this.
Sure.
Come back election there?
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Vote early. Do we have the most recent one, Ken? No. With the talk, so we want to get a copy of the.
Right.
Do you got one? And actually, can we get a copy of the lighting? We have that.
Did we see the last time?
Very good. And thank you for getting rid of the worm sign.
Yes, thank you for that. I didn't like that.
I thought that was kind of tacky.
Yes. Do you still sell them? You don't sell the worms?
No.
There's something about selling worms and selling food.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. All right, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Leslie McNeil, twenty-five South Street Site Plan Approval. Hi. And what?
This is the rear deck.
Yes.
Screened-in deck, and the current use is an open deck.
Yeah.
So you have an open deck, do you wanna put a roof on?
Yeah, what I'd like to do, that's what we really wanted to do, didn't get to do. I mean, actually, this is, make this into a screened-in porch, we're not changing the footprint at all. I'm just putting a storage thing in there. This is the only part that's going to be a roof. And we have these vertical screens over. And as I said, it's the exact footprint, same usage of the screen deck. And the building materials will be identical for the cloud. The house is not pink, it's printed.
Are you replacing the flooring, or are you gonna build up on?
Well, actually, I am replacing the flooring because it was rotting, it was put in in ninety-six, and that's what actually started the thinking about redoing the deck.
Do you have to do the structure as well, or just the deck?
No, just the deck, the structure is fine, and the sun tubes and the concrete footings are all there.
Will this go away?
Pardon, no.
Okay.
Oh, and I also have that, that fence, the only neighbor who, the only person who can even see this, you can't see this in the street, no neighbor can see it except my neighbor to the west, and he wrote a letter about it, because he feels minded about it. He actually only can see it over that lattice work.
Okay.
And your neighbor to the rear, no?
The landscaping and the shed, the accessory shed, you can't see it.
Can I keep this in the file?
Oh, sure, sure.
Where exactly on South Street is this?
Twenty-five South Street.
Yeah.
Two over from the Butler School, the yellow house is set back.
The north side of the South Street.
It's the north side of the street.
Okay. So it doesn't face the, the lake?
No. No, it's basically behind the Four Sisters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, anybody have any objections to this?
What kind of, the material for the, for the columns is gonna be?
This is gonna, this is gonna be four by four, pressure-treated posts. This is going to be the same shingling as on the roof, and the novel cloud will go around wherever it's solid or the knee wall.
Right now.
They'll have to be painted.
Have to be painted.
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, I'm sorry, it's yellow, I put, wrote that here, it'll be yellow with white trim, just like the house.
So all of the exposed features of it are gonna be painted?
Absolutely.
Except the deck, I don't think.
Oh, the deck is not, no, no. But you should not see that it's an addition, or I think it should blend in and have the similar kind of roof to what's over the door.
So it'll be painted or stained to match the rest of the house?
Yep.
Yellow and white.
Yep.
And are these screens or are these wood?
The original thought had been that they might be screened, but I think that we're gonna put them in as a knee wall and have them to be narrowly covered.
Yeah, this used to be a barn structure, I think, right?
I think it was actually the delivery.
The carriage house, right.
For twenty-seven, which is the other house, that, that's the house that I own originally.
And I remember where it was a barn.
Yeah, because it has no, it has no condition, yeah, I mean, it's not a. Restored in ninety-six, that's when we got the work and the stuff.
And it's no setback issues, no? Where is your property line to the?
It's somewhere behind that fence, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly, but that, that line is the one that I share with gentlemen who wrote the letter.
More than ten feet?
No. But it's, it's pre-existing.
Well, you're, you're increasing the intensity of a pre-existing condition, which.
Right, so you have to get a variance if you're building within the ten-foot setback. Even if you were just replacing the deck, that's one thing, but you're actually improving and adding something new within the setback.
So what do I have to do to get that variance? I mean, what?
Talk to Karen, she will give you an application for a variance, and you'll have to go to the ZBA to get a, a side yard variance. And you'll have to measure it to find out what exactly it is, but if it's less than ten feet, you, you don't meet the side yard setback.
The reason I have the question is, in front of the house where I put the addition, it's not a ten-foot setback, and that was approved.
I don't know when that was done, or under what circumstances.
And that was when the historical society gives a recommendation for the improvement on our house.
Well, I'm sure.
Either you got away with something?
Oh, I don't think so.
Well, you got a variance?
We got variances for stuff, I don't know what.
Okay, so, so you probably went through the process.
So you'll have to come up with a survey with the building shown on it, and the measurement between your side yard and your rear yard and, and the front yard shown on there, so that you can determine whether you need a variance and how much of a variance you would need if you do. And you can fill out the site plan or the variance application. We could do a recommendation if you want tonight, and take that off.
We don't have the exact.
Well, no, we have to, we won't have to.
We don't have it yet.
But at our next meeting, it's, I would be surprised if the variance was not supported, but that's a different board, because you're, you're gonna stay on the same.
Very interesting. But the third Thursday, so if you had everything in the November first meeting, we'd be fine for the November twenty-first ZBA.
So the west, the western plane of your, or western side of your building is gonna remain the same, it's not gonna be encroached any further.
No, I mean, my existing building?
Right.
Oh, no, no, nothing, nothing is changing on the building.
No, 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 where, where the, the deck is, is gonna just continue the western face of, of, right.
On the roof.
Right. Right, again, depending, yeah, you may have to deal, if you're gonna put a roof structure up there, you may have to deal with, with gutters or some way of directing.
But, right, but if I, if I have everything within that, whatever I'm asking for, you want everything within that, including the gutters, is what you're saying?
You, you may need to, to include gutter, gutters in your plan to handle water runoff from the, from the additional roof.
But if you do the survey and you show that, you know, this is seven feet or five feet or something from the neighbor's property, and then on November fifth, you come back and we can make a recommendation to the ZBA who meets on November twenty-first, and for the variance, and I agree, I don't see that why they would turn down the variance, but you have to do it because it's less than ten feet.
Or we don't know that.
We don't know that, actually, we don't even know. If we had the survey and we had the measurements and we knew it was ten feet, we could go ahead and approve it, but we, you know, we can't.
Without that information, right.
Without the information.
I know that's not, but I have this assumption because this facility is here and because the front building had been approved, but that's okay.
So I'm afraid that's all we can do.
Okay, let me just ask you one question, because I have workers here doing the repair on the deck right now, can they, I can either, if I have to move it, can, I mean, if you continue working to put the, all the deck down, that would be a problem?
Yes.
Because I'm, because regardless what happens, my deck will still, you know, even if you said.
You can replace incline.
You can replace, right.
Yeah, so I think you can continue with all this as long as the guys and the material are there, I'd like to at least go that far and then.
Yeah, you just can't build above the deck until you get the variance.
All right, sorry about that.
But she's gonna have to get a building, you have a building permit for?
Do you need that for repair?
Well, no, not for the repair, but for, for the new construction. For the new construction, she'll need.
She will eventually, yes.
Right.
That's what'll be going on.
Well, that's, that would be the difficulty in terms of saying, go ahead with.
Oh, yes.
Because then you're, you're gonna assume liability. She's gonna assume liability. To tell her.
Yeah.
All right, hopefully we, that resolves soon.
Right.
All right, the last item on the agenda is Kirchhoff Medical Properties, Northern Duchess Hospital. Let me tell you where we are right now. We have new plans that the hospital's coming tonight to present to the planning board. It's not a public hearing, it's just a discussion, because we haven't seen these plans yet. If the plans are a significant change over the plans that were presented at the last public hearing, then the next step would be to reschedule a new public hearing down the line to get public comments on the plan. We also really can't go much further than discussion, because the village engineer has not finished her review of the plans, and until we get that, we can't continue anything. So tonight is just a general discussion, we'll have to come back on November fifth for another general discussion to review the engineer's comments on the plans. So we'd like to hear from the hospital, should we answer the ZBA? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you again, I'm Jeff Kane with Kirchhoff Medical Properties, joined by Larry Bedrow. Where'd Larry go?
Yeah, I'm out here.
Sorry. All right, thank you. Okay. With the chase and engineering, I also have Joe Kirchhoff from Kirchhoff Medical Properties, Dave Ping and Ben DeSanto from Health Quest in the audience. The, since the, the last time we were here, and again, the last time we were here, you had closed the public hearing and adopted a negative declaration for the environmental impacts related to this application. We heard lots of comments from the, from the community. And the hospital recognizing its place within the village, recognizing the need to listen to neighbors, and recognizing that, that, that the neighborhood, the village is important to the hospital, the hospital's important to the village, there's a real need to, to work together. And so we've been working very hard with the, with the engineering aspects of the project, and working very hard with the neighbors to address, to address a lot of the, the comments that we heard. And so we've, we've developed a plan that we're presenting to you tonight as an alternative for you to consider to the, to the original plan that we had presented. And it's an alternative in that we have reworked some of the parking in the, in the front, in the front field, that's, that's, that's the, that's the nut of the, of the change that we've made here. We've reworked that parking in an effort to address a lot of the concerns, a lot of the, frankly, a lot of the misinformation that we heard, we worked very hard to correct that, and then worked, worked very hard to, to, to address some of the, some of the concerns that we, that we'd heard from the public. The, and I, I can, I can point on, perhaps on this plan, if you. You can see most clearly, and Larry will go through this in a little detail, but really the crux of it is that the original parking field came out in this area at the front door of the hospital, this is the inner front door, original parking came out here and extended along, parallel to the, to the Route nine frontage. We've pulled that parking back and moved it to the rear of the, of the hospital. One of the things you had asked us originally is that, is there any other place you can put parking? And we were, the hospital, again, very resistant to having to go to valet parking. And that's the only way that we could get this, really what's now distant parking working for the hospital, is that the option of during peak times of having valet parking on the campus here. The Health Quest system has experience with valet parking, two things come, come across. One, it doesn't cure the issue, they get, where, even where they have valet, most people, the large majority of people don't, choose not to use it. It's, it's, it's more of an inconvenience for them than actually finding parking. And, and number two, it comes at tremendous financial cost to the, to the hospital. And again, this is, this is an age when hospitals are continuing to take a very large hit, will continue to take a very large hit financially in the future, and so the issue of valet parking is something the hospital is, has, has, has realized that as an option, again, pending your review, that, that they can, they can approach on this site, again, at, at, at peak times. The, the, the net of this all is that we have preserved, and again, Larry, go through this, we've preserved about eighty-five percent of the green space in front of the hospital. And really, you know, I've talked at length about the whole building, how function has really defined the, both the layout and the, and the, the vertical relationship of that building to the existing hospital. What's, what's, what's also very important in a hospital is the relationship of this parking to the front door, both the handicap parking and the actual patient visitor parking. And so we've, we've reduced that, but again, kept what, what we feel is, is, is very critical again to, again, this is about, this is about medical care. Even what's going on in the exterior of the hospital is about medical care, patient satisfaction. So we've reduced the parking to really, and, and some at the, some would argue, we've, we've, we've gone perhaps not provided enough parking up front for, for patients and visitors. We think it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a fine line there in terms of how much we really need to, to satisfy the, the patient and visitors to the hospital here, again, particularly the, the handicap accessible parking. But we think we've, 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 we've reached a, a point here that satisfies both those medical care concerns, and again, to a large degree, a lot of the comments that, that we heard from the community. And again, I'll have Larry talk about it a little more, and we'll, again, ask you to, to please consider this as an alternative plan to what we've previously submitted.
All right, thank you. Jeff, we're gonna present four or five slides, and in this presentation, the, the main layout that we're gonna be talking about is the oh-four approved layout. You'll, you'll see that represented in the dashed red line, the August twenty thirteen layout, which, which you've seen here before, and the most recent submittal, which is October twenty thirteen, so you'll see that labeled that way. All right, so this is the first slide here, this dashed red line represents the two thousand and four approved limits. Now, we've presented that on our plans all throughout the year up, up until that August site plan submittal, so this is it. What this line represents here is the, the lawn area that's out in front of the hospital. And this shaded area here represents that area between the existing parking that's out there right, right now and the two thousand and four approval. Now, I'm gonna, for the purpose of this presentation, I'm gonna be talking in acres, but we also figure it out in a square footage, but the existing lawn area, that green area right now today is one point eight four acres. In two thousand and four, that approval, which is essentially, you know, this area right, right in here, is point six seven acres. So the net on the green triangle, or the lawn area, is one point one seven acres. So that's kind of a summary of the two thousand and four approval. This slide represents, again, August twenty thirteen site plan, you've seen this before, you've seen the, the ways that we had to use here, you know, that angle parking to help get further off that two thousand and four line, and, and we, this clearly demonstrates how the site plan stayed within that two thousand and four line right here. Now, from a takeoff standpoint, the lawn area to be converted to the parking, which is a shaded area right here. So we have the, the layout, existing layout right now, so the difference between this and that is the August twenty thirteen layout. Now, now it's less encroachment into the green space than the twenty fourteen, as you can see, there's about eight feet right here. So the area on the takeoff is going to be, it's gonna be. So the area, uh, on the takeoff is going to be, um, it's gonna be, uh, less. As you can see, lawn acre, parking is 0.63, whereas in 2004, it was more, 0.67.
It's a little, almost 2,000 square feet less lawn removed in the 2000, 2013 August.
Right, right. Um, again, the, the dashed here, of course, is the twenty, uh, 2004 limit. Now here, um, again, we submitted, uh, about ten days ago, alternative parking plan, October. So you'll be reviewing that. And what this does, again, we analyze the impact onto that lawn area. And what this is showing, this green area is, is demonstrating, uh, uh, the amount of, uh, less impervious surface that we're putting into the green space. And the, and the yellow is the area that we are putting into that green space. So when you, when you take it off, um, the reclaimed additional lawn area, uh, goes, goes down. Instead of being up around 27, it's down to 15, almost cut it in half. Uh, the remaining lawn area, which is all this green area, now instead of coming up to here, it comes down to here. So we picked up quite a bit from the plans that you've seen in August to this alternative plan in, in, in October. So, so the difference, the net, instead of, uh, August is 1.18, October is 1.51. All right, so there's, um, so, so we lost parking. Where do we pick it up?
Well, let me just, just go one more point, Larry, is that the, again, the, the total acreage, uh, of the green area, um, in, in this alternative plan, um, existing green area that's converted to parking is, is just a hair over a quarter acre, 0.26 acres.
So that's represented in yellow on that plan?
That's represented in yellow on that plan, yes.
Yes. So in losing the parking, as Jeff made mention to earlier, the valet parking on the northern campus, we looked and it, it was very difficult to find, but we found some places on the northwest and the northeast, all right, campus. So the north-
Both in the vicinity of the Thompson House is really right up in the-
Right, so there's the northwest and here's the northeast. North being, of course, right there, straight up. Um, the other things that are consistent with this layout, as with the August layout, uh, these entrances here were closed off. So that bumps up the, um, the, the green space along Route 9. You don't, you don't have that. We also beefed up the landscaping and you'll see in the next slide, uh, and really looked at this whole corridor here. Uh, the other thing that this does is it saves more trees, saves more of the existing trees. And you'll see that in the next slide. And then we supplement that with, with, with landscaping, uh, as well. Uh, the other thing which is consistent throughout are the sidewalks that we placed here along Route 9, all along through here, and all along Montgomery Street from there all the way down. Um, consistent through, uh, both August and October is the, uh, landscaped garden that we did here with benches, perennials, uh, flowering trees, which have both access from the general public walking along Route 9 because we provided that access and, and from the hospital. And the unique, unique thing about the hospital, you can come straight out and go to it. You don't have to walk up here and come around and in. So it's designed to have easy access out from the hospital. All right, so what this slide shows is that same plan zoomed in. Uh, and what we wanted to show, clearly show here is the existing pavement in this darker gray. The proposed pavement in the light, lighter gray. We're proposing grass pavers, so we're connecting this loop, this handicap, uh, there are two, uh, aisles there. We're looping it with grass pavers and we have some grass pavers here. So you can see, I mean, this, you know, shows that we've got that, 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 and this area right here, which was shown as that yellow on a previous slide. What this slide also shows are the existing trees in dark green and our proposed landscaping in the lighter green. So you can see, um, of course, thi- this is not there, this is all green here. Uh, this is all beefed up, remember, we, you know, needed to do that. Um, and we're supplementing it with, um, shrubs, uh, eulogmas, persythia, uh, inkberry. Uh, these aren't small shrubs, I mean, they can get up and provide an effective screen.
And, right, and the point of shrubs, uh, again, is, um, that's what, and then they're, they're at the three or four foot height. That's what's gonna screen the cars in the, in the parking lot. Uh, again, that's one of the, one of the comments that we heard is need to, uh, that, that was, that was one of the issues. So it's not, the shrub planting should really get at that, at that issue.
Um, and again, this, uh, uh, shows, you know, again, that, again, this, the parking that's here is for handicap. There's 12 handicap spaces, uh, there. And, uh-
So, again, um, commerce questions that you may have that we can, uh, that we could answer? Again, I don't know if there are any, but we're certainly, uh, right, certainly available to answer anything that you have.
Could you go into some more detail in terms of the new parking that you, you discovered? And where that is and how that fits?
Yeah, I can just, uh, just to kind of route you there. This is the, the Thompson House Nursing Home, uh, here. Uh, there's existing, um, um, women's health structure here. It has a parking field. So there's an extension of the parking field, which will be a valet lot, uh, that's accessed, again, from the internal campus flow. Uh, and it's that, uh, we've, we've shown that striped for, um, everyday parking. Again, obviously with, at a, at a valet situation, that's get, gets a little denser than what, uh, than what, uh, than what you would have if just you were right parked in there. But we have shown it striped, uh, for, uh, for, for regular everyday parking in this, uh, in this field.
So that's part of the farmhouse?
Uh, farmhouse, yes. The farmhouse is, uh, is, sits at an elevation of probably 12 or more feet higher than, uh, than this, uh, this parking here. But yes, it is behind that, uh, behind that farmhouse.
And you won't be able to access it from Montgomery Street?
You will not be able to access it from Montgomery Street.
Except by going behind the other building.
From the parcel adjacent to it?
Yes.
Next to the farmhouse to the, there?
Here, right. So there's a, uh, there's a, as a residence about right here, again, it's in line with the, with the existing farmhouse. There's a significant grade, that's the same significant grade change between here and there. And we'll be planting at, uh, at the high elevation to, to screen, again, to screen that, uh-
No, I don't, I didn't see that planting on your-
It's in the submitted document.
This, this, this window doesn't take you all the way out there? Yes, yes.
There's a lot of trees planted on the left side of the parking lot. You know, when we had the three public hearings, there, there were, uh, the two issues for the neighbors on, uh, Montgomery Street were the loss of the stone house and, uh, blocking the view. And I think the neighbors suggested a fence, we suggested shrubs and trees. I saw that, I like the diagram, you know, the, the projection you submitted to us showing the fence, trees, shrubs and everything. I would, when we get to the public hearing next month, I definitely want to hear from the neighbors. And now I'd want to hear from the neighbors how they feel about another parking lot, um, at 106 Montgomery Street. Now they're gonna have two parking lots across from their houses, so, um, I, I want to hear a, a direct effect from the neighbors on Montgomery Street.
Sure, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
No, we'll go-
Oh, I was gonna say, the other, the other little section of parking is, uh, is, again, along an interior aisle. This is, uh, uh, these areas all require, um, rather significant, um, uh, earthwork to get them, uh, get them in, in, in this corner of the, of the site. Uh, but again, they're, um, uh, we, we think we can, we can get those, uh, those spaces in there. Again, your, your engineer's gonna review them as well. But, uh, that was the other area of, uh, of, of parking that we added on the campus.
Adjacent to the Kramer Park neighborhood?
Adjacent to?
Kramer Park, neighborhood to the north?
Uh, is that what this is? Sorry, I, I, I just, I don't know. Right, okay, yes, yes. Orchard runs, uh, runs along here. So this is where the, the bank parking initially reviewed by you, so this is inboard of that parking. Uh, again, it's within, uh, within the campus from that, uh, the additional, initial bank parking that you had reviewed last time.
So it's more intensive light parking up in that, in, in that area?
Right, right, but there's no, uh, you know, disturbance up, up over here, we're not cutting in that. I mean, we're essentially at grade on the street side.
Right, but you're creating, there will be more traffic, more, more, more vehicle, particular traffic up to that area of the property.
Yes, right.
Talk about the net gain or loss of parking under the August versus this plan?
Uh, it's, uh, it's net zero.
So you replaced, every, every parking station took away from the front lawn, you've replaced somewhere else on the property?
Yes.
Why does that need to be valet parking, even like, or maybe staff parking at the far back end?
Uh, back, uh, back here?
Yeah.
Well, the recon- recognizing that, again, in those peak conditions, you're gonna wanna put valet somewhere. That's what, that's what this lot was intended to be.
What are you defining as peak times of being?
Um, I'm not. Peak will define itself. This is gonna be, this is gonna be demand based. And, uh, as the hospital, a- as the, as the, as the traffic flow gets developed, the hospital will understand what those peak hours are and when they need to staff the valet parking. And the, again, the idea here is that the hospital needs to be patient centric.
Right.
So if we told you it was gonna be two to four on Saturdays, but really the need was, uh, was eight to 11 Mondays and Wednesdays, that, that, that wouldn't, wouldn't meet, again, the needs we think of, of a patient centric.
If those needs adjust and the staffing is not available to provide valet parking, what happens to those people that
Right.
need to access the facility and the hospital's not able to accommodate them with that valet?
This is, um, uh, it's not a, it's not a turn on a light switch and valet, right, right. So, so it's a, it's, it's a recognition of the hospital. They're gonna recognize, they're gonna need to provide valet because they're gonna recognize their own traffic patterns there. And when it becomes an issue, that they're gonna have to provide, provide the valet. That's, it's really gonna, it's not gonna, not gonna happen overnight. And it's not gonna, it's not gonna be that it happens, uh, on, on one day and they're gonna have valet the next day. They're gonna, they're gonna be able to understand their-
The functionality of that same number of spaces is not equal?
Uh, I'm not sure.
You're not, because you're dependent upon that, that, that additional factor in terms of providing some of the parking that was built into the prior plan?
You're ab- you're absolutely right. The, the parking here has more utility for the hospital than the parking back here.
More patient-friendly or public-friendly?
Unquestionably, which is why, again, that's, uh, it was, it was, which is why we developed the plan in the manner which, which was developed unquestionably. There's a-
Yeah, I'm just concerned you're trying to achieve a balance here. We have, uh, the neighbors on Route 9 to save a few trees there, it was the fairgrounds where nobody lives. And now we're moving parking back to the Kramer area, to the Montgomery Street area, affecting more neighbors. You know, and I'm, I'm, I think we're looking for a balance there of why, you know?
Uh, you, but you, and you've said it, it's, it's the balance that we're, that we're looking to achieve, uh, here. Um, that's, that's, that's what this is.
So, we, we took the development area, cut it in half, provided more lawn area than you had.
I would, I, I guess my concern is that you will end up without enough parking from a practical perspective. Again, assuming that the number of spaces that you, um, requested previously were justified with the valet situation, uh, we could very easily end up with situations where there's not enough practical parking at times when that switch isn't turned on, um, for valet parking when, in fact, it, it needed to be turned on.
Right, it's not like, right, it's not like a, uh, right, it's not like a retail center where you know that the gallery is gonna be full from, uh, beginning of November, right, right. It's, it's, it's a, it's a little harder to predict. But once the, but once a long-term pattern gets established, again, there will be the ability to, to, to meet that need. But, but I, but I, you know, like I, yeah, right, right.
You're also depending on more intense parking in those valet areas than self-parking would provide, right? That's what, that's what I, I gathered from what you've said.
There would be more cars there, right, yeah.
Well, that's more, that's more than parking.
Yes, yes.
Explain the elevation change around the, um, the farmhouse building. Would you be able to see that parking lot from Montgomery Street?
No. And we'll, and we'll provide you those, I mean, you, you just can't, right, right.
I like this, that elevation you gave us was nice. If we could see an elevation, um, of what the 106 Montgomery Street parking view would be from, uh, Montgomery Street as well, you know?
Or, I mean, a, a simple cross-section, you'll see, or, or both. Uh, but we cut in six feet through the six-foot wall there that's right in on that west side.
But you would, when we approved the wound care center, there was a lot across the street. You were gonna put up a shed or something, which hasn't been put up yet. Is that shed needed or is that a possible, uh, additional parking if we don't need that storage area?
That, that shed is needed.
Or could that shed be relocated someplace so that, um, that space would be, um, more accessible parking than-
Right. And, and again, it may, maybe go to that balance thing. If, if that, if that shed were in the vicinity of, of where we're- Uh, if that was in the vicinity of, of this parking area, we're talking about the shed were there and some of, pulled some of that parking where the shed was gonna go? Yes, that would, again, provide more utility on that, on that parking, yes.
My, my concern would be that I would rather see real parking than valet parking, given the scenario that you're presenting in terms of it, it not being necessarily consistently available and being subject to, um, maybe some factors that, that, um, are less controllable.
One thing that might help, and I don't think we've been provided this, but correct, if I'm wrong, is, do you have any designated staff parking versus visitor parking? Have you ever shown that on a map so that we can say, "This is sufficient because the staff is all parking back here and walking a little farther, so the visitors can park near the front doors and not have to-"
And staff is prohibited from parking again?
Right. The, the, uh, the only designated, I believe the only designated lot right now is the, uh, is a church, it's a church lot, right?
Right.
And we, which we have, which we have shown you.
If I was in your shoes, I would designate staff parking in the back corner. Have those people walk a little further so that your visitors don't have to be inconvenienced with valet parking or a longer walk.
Right, right.
And it seems to me that's a, a logical thing to do with those back corner parking.
The bomb's gonna have to move off before it will, yeah.
So, and, and I believe we have talked about that in terms of, again, the, the function. I'll, I'll go to the, the smaller map here. But if you recall, staff entrances on, uh, on the, in this building, the staff entrance is here. And so the, the idea is that this becomes a, a de facto staff lot. And staff is, uh, is not parking out front here, that that's left open. I don't, I don't think, any more definitive than that, or is that the, yeah, right.
So, so could you come up with us, with figures for us in terms of the anticipated, uh, visitor, patient parking at different times in the day and in the week? So that we could, um, have an idea in terms of, of how practical that parking plan really is in terms of serving, serving the needs of patients and visitors to the hospital?
Sure.
And that would then include also that addition, the first floor space and how that's gonna be utilized?
You're still considering the spaces along the back corner to be banked parking?
Yes.
So you, you still have a reserve?
We still, we wanted to keep, wanted to keep this as a net zero. So yes, again, that was the, that was the, the, I think, that this board asked for is the relief valve should something, uh-
Right, right. My concern is that that net zero is actually a loss of parking.
It's, it's-
Depending on the functionality of the valet parking.
All right, we agree.
I think you're strongly ought to consider staff parking lots for the furthest away. So that people are designated, this is where you park when you come to work, so that the space is closer up. You don't have to be inconvenienced.
Right, because it does get, then does get us something that you told it, huh?
Because if you don't have any designated parking for staff, my guess is they're gonna park closer to the front door and show up two minutes before work.
Right, right, although, although, you're right, so-
Five minutes before they work, get a little exercise before they go to work. Showing up five minutes before work, getting a little exercise before they go to work.
And then you're going to have, we would also, maybe you need to know something in terms of the shift change, because you have an overlap in terms of staff coming on and staff leaving, particularly the medical staff.
Right, that's, that's, that's the defining factor on staff parking, is that, are those two shift changes, because there's a mandatory overlap, particularly with nursing.
People don't immediately leave and open up a space at the same time somebody else is coming.
Well, not only that, but in the nursing, you, right, you don't have your nurses leave and then no one show up, right? You really, they're required to have that overlap, so yes, it's, right, it's built in, right.
So building those figures into the numbers that we see in terms of staff versus patient parking.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
I have another, we got a couple of letters from you today. The second major concern at the public hearings of the Montgomery Street neighbors was the smoking. And, you know, we talked about a possible smoking lounge, and Governor Cuomo signed a bill last month, no smoking within 15 feet of a hospital by any employee, so...
Hospital campus, it's not just, right, so it's not just the building, this is...
It's not even on the sidewalk.
Right.
Yes, and so the neighbors said, you know, cigarette butts and candy wrappers and things in their front yards, and, you know, you sent us this letter today about the policy, it's a smoke-free campus, you know, you can, you're going to circle and patrol and stuff. I still wish there was something that we could do to control this, because I know, you know, that, they've raised the price of a cigarette to like $10 a cigarette, and the pack says if you smoke this, you will die, and they still smoke, and, you know, all of your disciplinary things. You know, when you go into, you're leasing the parking lot from the church, and as you go into the parking lot behind those stone walls, there are a little grassy areas for the first parking spots. I wonder if you could arrange something with the church, if that's possible, maybe a little picnic table or some, or a little ashtray garbage can, it could be maintained by the hospital. I don't know if this is possible.
Do you have to smoke?
I don't know whether it's permitted to smoke on church property, but I mean, I'm just still concerned. I mean, last time I said, well, the neighbors could call the police or something. I don't want that to happen. I wish there was some way that we could deal with this in some other fashion.
Yeah, unfortunately, the legislation from the state seems to be not neighbor-friendly.
Right.
Because if you can't, if you can't smoke there, it really is forcing people out off the facility, which is onto a neighbor's property.
I could see, a bill before the legislature over the summer, all is in favor of banning smoking at hospitals, raise your hand. Of course, everyone says I'm, and no one really understands that we would have liked to let a smoking lounge inside the hospital to prevent this from happening, but, you know, we, so I wish you could think of something, but, you know, as we continue to work through this...
And I guess the other part of the letter, it didn't really provide us with much of an indication in terms of how you're really going to handle those people that do infringe on neighborhood, employees that do infringe on neighboring.
Right. I guess the one thing I'd like to say is it's, is it's smoking, but it's more than just a smoking policy. It is a, it is a good neighbor policy, and that's what, that's the point that President of the hospital is working to drive home, President of the hospital, in fact, the entire administrative staff there working to drive home. This is, I mean, you're right, I hadn't thought about it, but this kind of pales in comparison to you're going to die if you smoke. We're saying, well, we're going to, right, you know, that's right.
Doesn't stop them.
Doesn't stop it, and I hadn't really thought about that. But, but the point is, being a good neighbor is, is part of that, part of that policy, part of the program, part of the education, part of the training, part of the security patrols the hospital is doing to, to recognize that, yes, they need to be a better neighbor. And it's, and it is, it's, it's, you know, it's a reflection of the hospital, and I think they get that and are working to, working to correct that.
And just one thing, and we have had, with the, some of the increased patrols already doing, you know, they've been able to shoot people away from that, and people have been, have had a disciplinary action in their file and, you know, for that as well. So, you know, if they get too many disciplinary actions in their file for that, then they no longer...
And what's going to happen?
They no longer get to work at Northern Baptist Hospital. So we'll see if that is stronger than the pull of nicotine.
This letter did not, you know, did not give that sort of assurance. And that's what I think we would prefer to see. If you cannot in any way find a way to do a designated smoking area that is not obfuscant to your neighbors, then we have to be assured that your security guards and your disciplinary action will have some teeth to it. And this letter didn't assure me that, because it essentially said, as I read it, the law says you can smoke anywhere beyond 15 feet of a campus property, which is halfway across the street, and that your security people are going to enforce that. Well, that doesn't help. I mean, it says the neighborhood...
The 16th foot puts them in, in somebody else's property, which is...
So I think we would want something in writing as part of the approval that gives stronger assurances about disciplinary action on, within 100 feet or within whatever.
On, on, on some neighbor's property, I think.
Or in front of some neighbor's property, in public sidewalk, and still impact those properties.
Right.
And I guess the other thing would be some sort of idea in terms of how you're going to communicate that same dynamic to patients and visitors at the hospital, so that people who come and go from, or are there for any sort of extended period of time, also embrace the policy in terms of not, and it's, and I fully understand it's a very difficult dynamic to...
We've certainly been, I'm, sorry, by the way, I'm Dave Ping, sorry. The, we've certainly, our policy is posted, we try and make people aware of it, we, if a patient at the hospital, if we know that they smoke, we try and do smoking cessation while they're a patient in the hospital. I mean, it, there is, however, a limited amount of, I mean, we can't...
I asked the village attorney to read the law, and I think you said that a patient or a visitor can smoke 30 feet from the building.
Some patients have rights in the hospital in terms of smoking.
So they can go out in the parking lot and smoke, but the staff cannot.
Our attorney's interpretation of that is, is it has to be a residential living facility, not a patient of an acute care hospital or the skilled nursing facility.
Dueling attorneys.
The second letter, the second letter clarified Dr. Varelli's property and permission to close off the access roads and...
Well, it discussed it, it didn't really clarify that you have the agreement necessary to do.
Right.
Dr. Varelli was unfortunately in Nova Scotia at the time, and so, but we have, yes, you'd think, you would think. And, and so we do have his assurance, though, that we can close that off, and we'll, now that he's, now that he's back, we'll get something in writing that's more clear than, than what's there.
And you said 85% of the existing green space in the front of the building would be preserved, that's under the proposal you showed here?
Yes. It's, right, again, this is, right, looking at the, the green area across the frontage, you know, this, this being the existing parking, so counting the green space from the existing parking up to Route 9, 85% of that current, what you see as green space, is preserved under this plan.
How much green space are you losing elsewhere on the campus to relocate?
I did not do the calculation. There is some, there is some green space lost in the other two areas, we can, I don't know off the top of my head, I...
It would be helpful to know what the exchange rate is in terms of...
Sure.
Now, you've got green and olive there as existing trees and new trees. The August plan showed green and olive as evergreen trees and not evergreen trees, and so we asked for more evergreen, because especially small trees, you know, they're a thin stem and then a canopy going up, whereas an evergreen is the exact opposite and provides more screening coming down, and we'd ask for more evergreens, especially around the perimeter, if that's possible, to see that on the plans.
This is the part of that balance issue, and I, I hear you very loud and clear, a lot of what, what we heard was, actually, don't really supplement the planting here because we kind of like looking at what we're looking at now. We're not opposed to evergreens, not opposed to deciduous, not opposed to shrubs, not opposed to leaving it as it is, we're, we're, you know, this, our proposal adds trees in there for exactly that reason, we can certainly put more, we'll put more evergreens in there. Again, it's just, I'm just, just as background, that's part of the, part of the balance that we've been, we've been hearing and will...
One of the complaints at the, at the public hearings of the Montgomery Street neighbors was that the 2004 expansion was supposed to have more trees planted that were never planted, and they expressed the concern about, you know, the trees being followed through on and that they do more evergreens, again, to provide them screening from the hospital. All the people living all the way down that hill wanted some protection from, you know, the little building.
You're right, and I should have made the distinction of Montgomery versus, versus those who are on the Route 9 corridor, but you're absolutely right on Montgomery. But, and for the record, though, all the trees, as far as near as we could tell, the trees that were on the plan for the 2004 approval were actually, were actually provided, so that's, right.
They just didn't develop the way they were supposed to. Just saying.
No, no, I, I'm not arguing, right, right.
We also, on this plan, as you know, we added the fence.
Yes.
Right, which is...
The neighbors asked for that, I was, and we asked for that as well, so that's good to see that, to screen that. We're still upset about losing the stone house, but, you know, at least the thrift shop was saved.
Yes.
I think the discussion on evergreen versus deciduous and planning versus not planning is that you want the mix, especially with some base level of evergreens in front of the parking areas that are visible from the street, and the area that, north of the entrance or...
This side, right.
That area.
That area, right.
Yeah.
That's, that's a southeast area.
That area can be more open because you want that sense of a village green space, not necessarily a village forest there that would block the views of the hospital itself.
The rolling lawn is important.
What's that?
The rolling lawn is important.
Exactly. So you may have it overplanted in the green space and perhaps underplanted, especially with evergreens, in the area over by the Varelli building, towards that area.
Right, okay, all right.
Now, I, for one, I appreciate the efforts you've gone through, squeezing more parking in the rear and less parking out front, and I, the parking that does seem to be encroaching on the lawn comparatively speaking to the existing front park, front yard parking, is primarily handicap parking, which has a stronger rationale being near the entrance. So I think, I think you've done, it's a very good effort on the interest to see what the public and the people who've been opposing this have to say, but I appreciate the effort, and I think it also might be worth noting that in the 2004 plan, the hospital was very resistant about having sidewalks. The existence, the proposed sidewalks only went from the Montgomery Street intersection to the front door, not across the whole park, front of the bar, so not all, all the way down Montgomery Street. So that is also an improvement over the 2004 plan, that probably should be noted.
And it would, again, it would be helpful to have those numbers in terms of patient, visitor parking versus staff parking, so that we can have a reasonable assurance that there's going to be enough balance in terms of the parking there to the needs.
Well, thank you. We've, we've tried to be responsive, you know, clearly, we're not going to make, we're not going to make everybody happy, our, we, we need to certainly satisfy your, your comments and concerns, and so we, again, we look for guidance from you.
What we have to wait for now is input from the village engineer to see what she thinks of putting the parking there. There could be drainage issues, whatever, with 106 with the 25 or 30 spots, whatever it is down the hill, so she has some concerns, and I guess, she said she'd get the report back to us next week, so we can have time to review that and then have another discussion on election day, on November 5th, you come back and we'll talk more about the plans and the engineer's review and comments she has to us.
One question, in advance of that, if you can answer, it's right up against the property line there, close to a wetland, has, is that going to pass muster with DEC?
What are you referring to?
The...
Farmhouse parking.
The farmhouse parking.
Parking lot is right up against the, it appeared to me to be right up against the property line and very close to that wetland. Does it meet the buffer requirements and that sort of thing?
We believe so.
Well, you have to do the DEC...
Have to have more than fully, right now?
No, no.
No. All right, well, that'll probably be part of the engineer's review, I assume, and the drainage issues in relation to the wetland would also be something she would probably have to look at carefully.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we revise the SWIPs if she has all that.
She said, she wrote to me today, she's not finished, that's why she didn't come tonight, because she didn't have much to say yet until she finishes, but she will be here on the 5th to talk about, you know, any, any responses or any questions we have of her comments about the plan. So we just have to continue the discussion.
Can we track this off a line that issues, where does that come in? Is that under this?
Yep.
Is that the engineer?
The lighting plan was updated, you'll see that.
The engineer will review the lighting plan and the planner submits her comments to the planning board, and we review that.
We have many steps to go through before we actually get to site plan review. We have to have a public hearing, there's the variance, which is pending before the zoning board, which I believe has been cut in half from seven feet to three and a half feet, so there has to be a public hearing for that, and once all the public hearings are concluded and the zoning board does or does not grant the variance, we can finally get to site plan review, we can go over the specifics of the lighting and the parking and the whole issue, so, you know, we're a few steps away from that right now. So, does the board have any other questions?
At this point.
Michael? All right, so we'll see you back on the 5th after we get the engineer's report, and we'll continue the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We had, did you guys get a chance to look at the minutes? Karen had the minutes from...
A while ago, right?
Yeah, I found one, can I give you the copy? Did you give it back to me? All right, I must have, oh. I have one comment about it.
This is, may I be the chance with Reddy Deserver, Jeff King? She was wondering if we could email her the comments you guys just gave. Hey, how you doing? Susan, hi. You're welcome.
I appreciate it.
Oh, so it was a thing about...
It should be R, written letters were received, and R in this application.
We looked at that, and the extent of that is...
And I thought the signatures were the same, the signatures were similar to the last year. They're not exactly the same.